Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's Tuesday, March the 7th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Casey Oliver, the Senior Director of Family Ministry at Stonewater Church, to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Fledge of Allegiance and the Texas Fledge led by Councilperson Rose Myers. All rise, please.
Thank you, Sarah. Let's pray. Father God, we love you. And God, we praise you just for the opportunity together and to carry out just your instrument of government in this community. God, I pray for great wisdom over these leaders. Father, I pray those who do not know you meet you. And God, interact with you in a powerful way. And God, I pray just that we operate with integrity. And God, that our words and our thoughts and our actions honor you in every way. We love you. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in honoring the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one nation, indivisible, and just as for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one nation, indivisible, and just as for all.
Well, it's always good to see a crowd out there when we've got really nice weather and there's other things you can be doing. But I appreciate everybody coming to the council meeting tonight. Got a few things on the agenda. Our first thing is usually our citizen participation, and we have nobody that's signed up to participate tonight, so we're going to move on down to the consent agenda. Okay, looking forward to it, Tom. The consent agenda, the first item is to consider approving the council meeting minutes of February 21st, 2017, at the regular meeting. And the second item would be to consider approving a bid award to Crawford RW Company for the re-roofing of the Granbury Service Center Administration Building in the amount of $90,476,000. As you've seen, council, you've seen that in the packet, that did come in as the lowest bid. So council, you've seen the consent agenda items? Are there any items you'd like to make changes to or to pull off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Counselors, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move right on into the deliberation agenda. The first item will be a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Physical Financial Report and Audit of the City of Granbury for the fiscal year 2015-16. Chris, do you have a staff person for that?
First, I'd like to just acknowledge the great work that the Finance Department and the rest of the staff did in pulling all the pieces together for this audit. And Ava, if you would, come on up to the microphone and introduce our gentleman with the auditing firm and add any comments you may want to preempt him with, if any.
Thank you, Chris.
But thank you very much, Ava.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for those good comments. It definitely was a combined effort with our auditors and our finance team. And I am very excited to be able to present to you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And with that, I would like to introduce our auditor, Daniel Hungerford, who is representing George Morgan and Sneed, and will be able to give you more detail about the financial statements.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Hungerford. I'm the Audit Manager with George Morgan and Sneed. I'm here tonight to go over the audit and the Comprehensive Annual Report for September 30th, 2016. First off, I'd like to acknowledge that for the 2015 CAFER, the city received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And we believe that this 2016 CAFER will also receive that certificate. Now, our independent auditor's report is on pages 1 through 3. We've issued an unmodified or clean opinion, the standard opinion you would see in any good financial statement audit. Our Government Auditing Standards Report on Internal Control and on Compliance is on pages 119 through 120. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or instances of non-compliance that we were required to report in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. I would like to just hit a few high points for some of the financial statements. Your governmental funds all reported positive changes in fund balance. Your general fund fund balance increased $812,783. Revenues of the general fund increased $671,555. Property taxes increased $476,000 due to shifting INS rate to MNO rate and also a $98 million increase in property values. And your sales tax increased $473,000. Expenses of the general fund decreased about $903,000. That was primarily due to a decrease in public safety. In the prior year, you purchased a fire truck that was financed with the capital lease. That wasn't there this year. Your general fund unassigned fund balance was $4,785,111. Your goal is to have unassigned fund balance as 25% of your general fund expenditures, and the balance at year-end was 37%. So you exceeded that goal. I'm going to move on to the proprietary funds. This will be your utility fund and your airport fund. Your utility fund and airport fund both reported positive changes in net position. However, that change in net position, it would have been negative without a non-cash addition of capital assets. In the utility fund, you received some, there were some developer contributions. They were reported as contribution revenue. And then also in the airport fund, you had the land and other airport assets that were paid for by the Capital Projects Fund. If you take those out, both would have had negative changes in net position. Your operating income for the utility fund was $1,187,000. But the airport fund was a negative $195,000. Both of those include depreciation expense. In your utility fund, your revenues decreased about $62,000. Water and wastewater charges increased $355,000 due to an increase in consumption in customers. But your electricity charges decreased $355,000 due to a decrease in your kilowatt hour sold. The decrease in operating revenues was due to other revenues. Your utility operating expenses increased $756,000. The largest increase was $622,000 in water treatment and distribution. SWAT plant costs increased about $320,000 due to an increase in the city's percentage of water that you took from the plant and also your share of capital improvements that they made. And you also had a $284,000 loss on disposal of reverse osmosis treatment equipment. I think that whenever you purchased that equipment, the life was too long. And this year, when it was taken off the books, there was $284,000 remaining basis that we had to recognize as a loss.
Which, I'm sorry, which location was that at?
I believe it was the mobile reverse osmosis equipment you purchased a number of years ago.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The unrestricted net position of the utility fund was $3,448,216. That balance at year-end was 21% of the operating expenditures excluding depreciation. That's a decrease from 28% in the prior year. It's below your goal. Part of the reason that you went below the 25% is you had the increase in the operating expenses of $756,000. And your unrestricted net position decrease, part of that has to do with your increase in your investment in capital assets. You were investing money in fixed assets, and that was part of the reason that your unrestricted net position decreased. Okay, last year, we discussed that we implemented a new accounting standard related to your net pension liabilities. This has to do with your TMRS and your Texas Emergency Services Retirement System pensions. This year, because of a decrease in the discount rate and also a significant decrease in the investment income of your TMRS plan, your net pension liability increased by about $1.7 The financial impact on your governmental and business type was a decrease of net position of $355,000. The reason that the impact on your net position is not as significant as the increase in your net pension liability is because the difference in your investment earnings will be amortized over five years. So that's going to hit your fund balance for five years. Because the market was up at the end of '16, I feel like this is going to kind of reverse itself next year, except you're still going to have to recognize the expense for the loss last year. But because of the fluctuation in the market and their ability to change that discount rate, your net pension liability is going to fluctuate from year to year. At year-end, your TMRS plan was 78% funded compared to 82% funded in the previous year. So the discount rate change and the decrease in the market value had a 4% change in your funding of the plan. Last thing I wanted to discuss is during the year, we also had a single audit on your federal awards. The major program was the Drinking Water State Revolving Funds that were passed through the Texas Water Development Board. That would be your water treatment plant and also the meter replacement program. We did not have any findings or question costs related to that program in our single audit. The single audit is something that looks like you're going to continue to be subject to as long as you continue to have this Texas Water Development Board funding until you spend all those funds. And also, I believe next year, you have the street project or the downtown improvement project that is federally funded. Does anyone have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to thank Ava as well and the rest of the staff. They had everything together that we requested and made the audit go really smoothly. It's really nice when you can give them a list of information. They have it ready when you get there to do the audit. We really appreciate it.
Good to hear.
Daniel, I'd like to thank you for getting this to us in time to be able to do it at this meeting instead of the last meeting. I know that pushes you all a little bit, but it means a lot to us here. We really appreciate the extra effort you did to get that done.
No problem. You're welcome.
This is a great, great manual for the council to have. I'm sure, like I told you earlier, there's a lot of information in there. There's a lot of things there that a lot of people will be able to break it down and to use all year long as a reference, you might say, and to go back and look at the things. So, good job on this book. It's really good. So, thank you. Thank you. All right, like I say, that was a presentation, very well, very good presentation. Next, we'll move into a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 1760, in proving a request of the Island of HOA to amend the planned development for Catalina Bay Phase 2, adopted by the ordinance 06-116 and number 10-429, to allow placement of a 96-square-foot utility building in the common area. The property is located in Waters Edge Drive and on Island Drive. I'm going to call upon Scott to give us a finding on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. This particular property is located in a planned development, single-family residential. You can see the entry point to the northeast corner of the subject residential property along Waters Edge Drive. There's the Boulevard entrance that comes in. You can see generally located in a little pushpan about where that 96-foot square foot building will be located. As a part of your application packet, this is the site plan that was presented by the applicant, showing where the entrance wall is coming into the Boulevard entrance, and again where that 8-by-12 little tough shed is what it is will be located on the adjoining property line. We did cast out the property owner notices for this particular PD amendment. We received roughly three back, which amounts to a little over 2% of the affected properties that are against this proposal, 2.36%. It's under the 20% supermajority requirements that are contained within the zoning ordinance. Aerial shot of that, again, that adjoining property fence and the walls or the entryway points that are noted on the gentleman's site plan. You can see the entry wall, and again, the aerial image of the entry wall that's on the overhead. You see the area is highly landscaped. We have that screening to the north, and we have some vegetative screen as well. The applicant did say that he would provide some additional vegetative screen around the building. The building will be used for security equipment, landscaping supplies, and other supplies maintained by the HOA. The purpose of the PD amendment is our zoning ordinance doesn't allow for a secondary structure on a lot or tract without a primary structure, and that's what's going on here. So the primary purpose of the amendment to the PD is to allow for a secondary or accessory building without a primary building within the tract, the tract being the common area maintained by the HOA. You have also in your agenda packet the summary from Mr. Bauer, who's the HOA representative that's presenting the application on behalf of the HOA. And the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on this and imposed four conditions as a part of approving, or their recommendation of approval of the PD. First, the accessory building will be placed on the site according to the attached site plan provided by the applicant. Landscaping will be as proposed by the applicant, again, referencing the site plan, and will hide the utility building from being seen from Waters Edge Drive and the island at the entrance subdivision. Thirdly, the utility building is for HOA use only. And lastly, the development plan is hereby amended. The existing development plan is hereby amended to place the utility building in the common area without a primary building as shown on the attached exhibit, again, that being the variance to the zoning ordinance. This was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The mayor will be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This time, I'll open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item? No, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, any questions for Scott on this item? Scott, did you say that this was going to have a pad? Does it have a concrete pad?
I don't know if it will have. Generally, these tough sheds are kind of on skids, and they just locate them in. Now, I know that there's, in talking with the applicant and Jim, our billing official, it is expected because there's security equipment to have electrical services, so there'll be an electrical permit. But I don't know if it'll be on the foundation. Typically, we see these things just kind of roll in on skids and placed on the ground.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, but, you know, if there's a way to anchor them to the ground, it would be obviously the logical thing for them to do.
Yeah. Let me drive off with it.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. Lee had called me President of the Association about a month ago or so, and he emailed me first. And he was out of town, and I told him to get ahold of our city manager, which he did. I think he's done everything that we've asked him to do to get legal. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, sir. He has complied with everything that's required.
And he showed me where there's going to be hidden and couldn't be seen from the road. If I lived in a neighborhood, I wouldn't want one sticking around my front yard. And I don't think that'll happen, you know, the way they're trying to do it. I move it. We approve it.
Hey, we've got an entertainment, we've got a motion. We'll have to approve the said recommendation, and I'm assuming with the said conditions.
Yes, sir.
So we've got a motion, counsel, to approve the building with the said conditions.
So moved.
And I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number four is approved. Item number five is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 17-17, in proving in request of Kelly Clark for a specific use permit to allow a temporary outdoor event per Section 1.04.002-F.2 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance regarding animals at the City Beach Park. This event is scheduled for March the 8th through the 21st, 2017, and the property is located in the 700 block of East Pearl Street. Scott will call from you to give us a little more history on that one, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What we have is a request to use city property for the Bulls on the Beach event. This is classified as an outdoor entertainment event, which requires a specific use permit in the commercial zone, like commercial zone that's seen, depicted on the zoning map outlined in red. As a part of the zoning ordinance requirements are supplemental standards. Outdoor amusement events under an SUP can only be issued by council once a year for a period of no greater than 14 days. So you can see on his application, he is proposing that the term be for those 14 days, specifically March 8th, 2017, through March 21st. One other little nuance of the zoning ordinance is if you have an outdoor amusement event and you're close to residential zone property, and you live within, the residents live within 300 feet, then the burden falls on the applicant to go knock on doors and get support from the adjoining residential property owners. If not, then it prompts a three-quarter vote by city council. The applicant was made aware of this. They chose not to go door-to-door within the residential properties that are within the area. I'll get to the map. You can see generally where those properties are within 300 feet, and rather just propose to try to acquire the three-quarter vote by city council. So both the outdoor event and the usage of a PA system require this three-quarter supermajority vote. I wanted to make you aware of that. Approval of the SUP will give the applicant the allowance to go ahead and apply for an event festival permit, which is handled administratively, internally by city staff. It's reviewed by staff, the police department, and the inspectors are all signatories of that. The insurance is rolled into that application request as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission saw that there was no change from the previous year's event that was being presented by the same applicant and recommended approval of the SUP to allow for the temporary outdoor amusement center with following conditions. One, that the term length be specified on the application, that is, March 8th through the 21st. And then, secondly, that the event shall be done in accordance with the city's adopted event festival permit ordinance and the requests contained within the application and processed by the city. That's it. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. I will note that Mr. Clark is here tonight with us. If the council has any questions for Kelly Clark? Anybody in the audience got any comment on this item or wants to speak on it? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for either Kelly Clark or Scott?
Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
I was talking with Mr. Clark before the meeting, and he said he really didn't need the 14 days. It's like three days before and three days after. And we go through this every year, and I tell you, I've been to all but one of his rodeos. He puts on a good show, a clean show, an entertainment show, and there's a lot of bull down there, so y'all should go. But is there any way we can change it to like a five-year permit or a three-year where he doesn't have to come back every year? Kind of like we do a bed breakfast.
We would have to come back and amend the zoning ordinance to allow for that. We do that for B&amp;Bs, but these, at least when the outdoor event ordinance was written for the zoning ordinance, they wanted to look at these on a case-by-case basis because they have popped up in different areas, not the bulls on the beach. But it was really earmarked for discussion for carnivals. They wanted to see where they were located and do them on a case-by-case. But more to your question, we would have to come back and rewrite the zoning ordinance and change that provision to 14 days throughout the calendar year.
Well, I'll go ahead and vote the way it is, but I wish that's something the city manager could do.
And also, you know, I mean, along those lines of Mr. Allen there, I'd like to see at least it brought to the council a little earlier. I mean, I see the 8th, which is what, tomorrow? I'm assuming that's set up, and it'll be a lot of setup, and then there'll be breakdown in that whole time frame there. But, you know, there's always items that might come up that we'd want to be aware of and, you know, presenting to the council the day before is cutting it pretty close. So I'd like to see that happen a little earlier in the future. Counsel, any more concerns or questions for?
One of the things, Mayor, I think that we may have to get him up here to ask this question, but I think, didn't we let him use, or we didn't let him use, but we furnished a man in a front loader to unload his chutes and stuff for him, and then we had him load it up when he was done the next day. Do you know, Chris?
We might ask, would that be Aaron? Well, do you know anything about that? With the front wheel loader?
That's going to make sure it's included in this.
Maybe Kelly would like to speak. Mr. Clark?
My name's Kelly Clark. I live at 1601 McVoid in Springtown, Texas. I own Shoot Two Productions. This is our fourth year to do the Bulls on the Beach. We love the city of Granbury. We've had good success here, and we get a lot of guys from all over the country that come and stay here. Our company has grown. This is our first show that we have of the year, so we get most all the guys here. At the end of our tour this year, we'll be giving away a Harley-Davidson motorcycle to our champion, which is in Lake Worth, Texas. But Lake Worth, our first one, we really enjoy it. The guys really come out, and we'll have them here. Last year, we did a two-day deal. This year, it's one day, but we'll have them here from 10:00 in the morning until at least 10:00 at night. They have to be here for that time because I say so. But we need the front-end loader because every truck that I own, we have stuck on y'all's beach because it's beach sand. So we can get so far out there, but when we get to the deeper part of the sand, we can't move around out there. So we usually use the rubber tire loader that you guys provide for us, and we don't need it very long. We just need it for a few of our bigger pieces of equipment, and then the rest of it's all done by hand.
I'd appreciate if you could put that in your motion. That'd get me covered.
Would you like to write, give me a put in a motion? You're going to try and put a Harley-Davidson?
Nope.
That's right. I was afraid Mr. Allen was going to volunteer one of us to ride the bulls, and I'd...
Mayor, you delivered.
Mr. Allen's been to most all of ours, as he said, and we haven't yet to get him on one yet.
Get him on one. Or put him in that barrel.
He volunteers a lot of guys, but I haven't got him on one yet.
That's our Allen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Kelly? Thank you. Well, at this time, I'll let... Well, at this time, I'll let Mr. Councilman Allen entertain us with a motion.
All right. I move that we award the permit for, I'm trying to figure out where I'm at here now, for the bull riding, I'm sorry, you got it right there in front of me, for the bull riding for March the 8th through March 21st on the beach, which we include our equipment to help him unload and load it up.
You might want to add those two terms and condition there also, Mr. Allen. Add number two on.
Okay, yes, add number one and two, yes. Well, one is what it is said and then two, be done in accordance with the city adopted event festival ordinance, approved event festival permit request.
So, we got a motion by Councilman Allen to approve the amusement for the bull riding with the said terms and also to utilize the equipment furnished by the city of Granbury. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number six, which is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Claude Stembridge to preliminary plat a 10-acre tract of the Maline County Schools Land Survey, abstract number 348, is lots 127 Block 1 of the Stembridge North Edition. This property is addressed as 721-82817 Holly Hills Cemetery Road. Scott, can you give us some more on that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. This particular piece of property is located in the northeast corner, interior corner of Loop 567, just off Holly Hills Cemetery Road. The smaller lots that are where the mobile homes, manufactured homes are located are in the city, they're zoned interim holding. The back portion of the property that's delineated in a red highlight color is in our E P J. With your packet, when we first saw this plat as a D R C, some of the acreages that are actually on the preliminary plat that are roughly around three tenths of an acre did not meet the septic acreage threshold requirements that were adopted by the state and acknowledged by the city. So, that's why you see the continuance request before you. If I can defer your attention to this handout as part of your information, it's denoted as item six. You have first, an email from our inspector saying that the revised half-acre lot size meets our requirements and the state standards, and then you have also the updated preliminary plat, changing the lots respectively from roughly three tenths of an acre to a half-acre or over. So, on its face, the preliminary plat now meets the acreage standards of the state and the city of Granbury, according to the people that administer the septic permits here within the city. This is a preliminary plat. Again, it's conceptual. What this does is allow for the applicant to file a final plat, which you will be seeing in the next month or two. So, from staff's manage point, there's no reason to hold this plat up anymore, no need to entertain the continuance request by the applicant. We can go ahead and act on it and go ahead and have the applicant file the final plat, which should meet the approved preliminary plat design standards and content. We do have, we do have four variances as presented with this plat application as well, and I'll just read them all from the memorandum from your city engineer. We have a variance to 3684 to not install sidewalks, 3945 to not install sanitary sewer line. The nearest sanitary sewer line is about 2,000 legal feet away. So, again, you get into that proportionality analysis regarding its current location and the need to extend it to address the development on site. We have a variance to 3946 to not install a water line. Water is being provided from the utility district just on the north side of Holly Hills Cemetery Road. There's a C C N. On the north side of Holly Hills Cemetery Road, the subject property is not in the C C N, but it's being provided by the water utility company across the street. We also have a variance to section 48 to not install street lights. As a part of this preliminary plat, and we've seen these notes in the past, we have provided on the preliminary plat to which the property owner will sign that at such time that this property develops beyond what was currently captured as part of the annexation, that the city will get another bite of water, sewer, drainage, streetlights, sidewalk, et cetera. So, that is being added to the plat. It will be on the final plat. Property owner will sign that and it will be a covenant tied to the property with the title work. So, in essence, we're kicking the can down the road. These are, these are variances, but since we're getting the note on the plat, everybody's comfortable that if this land use change is over or the back portion of the property develops beyond what was currently annexed as a snapshot of what exists, then again, we'll approach the water sewer issue at a later date and no development will occur until that's addressed by the city. So, P and Z deliberated on this at the last P and Z meeting. They acted on the variance first, that the variances will only apply to the grandfather development that was annexed. Any new development proposal will trigger the property to conform to the adopted standards of the city of Granbury regarding infrastructure. They recommended approval of all the variances, provided that the note is on the plat and the property owner signs it, and they also recommended approval of the plat. Again, we want to recognize the amended plat with the five, the half-acre plus tracts that are presented and that are handed out to Counsel. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody in the public wishes to speak on this item? No, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Councilman Parsons?
So, this phase one that we're adding on here is not going to be approved tonight, but will be a possibility coming forward? Is that what we're saying? They're going to continue this?
No, so what the applicant and what city staff is asking is the continuance is no longer needed.
Okay.
So, we're asking Counsel to act on the plat, act on the variances. We've got all the notes to cover the city's interest on the infrastructure and go ahead and prove the modified plat that's handed out with the half-acre lots with the notes on the plat, prove the variances in the plat as presented today.
And so, then any other development in this plat, in this total land package would be required to meet development standards after that, right?
That's correct.
Why are there no sidewalks?
Right now, there are bar ditches.
You know, as I've stated before publicly, any future development that I see and that I vote for will have sidewalks.
So, right now, we have bar ditches. The property that's currently, you see the current green area that was annexed. So, we wrote a service plan for that. That's grandfathered in as is. So, it's hard to get sidewalks in that area. The remaining balance of that may be developed at a later point in time. We have the sidewalk note that states that any new development on any of these lots will prompt a trigger that will allow the city to reconsider sidewalks. So, once that's developed, and probably what's going to get developed is the latter, the south portion of the property, we'll get sidewalks at the time. The sidewalk also, the sidewalk note also covers those interior lots as well. So, any new development will prompt that. So, I think, I think we're getting covered the best we can. A good example is if that one HUD code home gets moved and new development takes place or a new HUD code home gets developed, then we can address the sidewalk issue at the time.
All right, thanks.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the said variances and the conditions on the variances that have been set out.
Go move.
I have a motion by Councilman, how?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number six is approved. Our next item is item number seven. It's a public hearing and consider executing a facilities improvement agreement, F I A 17-01, by and between Harbor Lakes Development LLC and the city of Granbury, Texas, for the development of a 5.739-acre tract of land within the Martin Sizer survey, abstract number 502, is lots 1-16 Block 1, lots 1-7 Block 2, and the common areas of the Harbor Lakes Edition, Section 4. The facility cost to support the development proposal amounts to $502,811.50. The property is located on Harbor Lakes Drive, south of Fifth Street. Scott, can you give us a little more on that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The Council reviewed and approved this preliminary plat in August. They're coming forward now with an F I A to get an early jump on the infrastructure, the streets, the water, the sewer, the drainage systems. The final plat will follow once they get closer to completing all the infrastructure and Public Works Department and the Inspection Department is ready to issue the letter of acceptance. We've seen this early F I A start with this developer and these pods within Harbor Lakes in the past. The total amount of the construction cost is roughly a half a million dollars. They've paid all their inspection fees. They've paid the outstanding engineering review fees. The F I A looks like it's in proper form. They've deposited the cash escrow with the city finance department. So, it's expected there'll be drawouts from that in order to pay the invoice contractor once they get a certain amount of work completed. I knew Councilman Parsons was going to ask, so there's the sidewalk plan that shows the sidewalk alongside Harbor Lakes Drive as well. We do, on the west side of Harbor Lakes Drive, have a sidewalk from an existing development, so you'll see parallel sidewalks along Harbor Lakes in that area. The F I A looks like it's in proper form. It's been secured. City staff recommends approval as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anybody in the public wishes to speak on this item? Comments? No, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the execution of the F I A for both tract four as presented by the developer.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you. At this time, we go into the executive session. I'll now declare that the city of Granbury Council is convened into open session and all members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections: Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, and Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, the Deputy City Secretary Position, and the City Manager Contract Renewal. Counsel, we'll go back into executive session. We'll probably go into the deliberation on real property first. Taken back in the executive session. Counselors, any more discussion?
Mayor, I make the motion.
Don't do that.
I second.
No, no further discussion. This council meeting is adjourned.